I live at one nine seven eight zero Hunter's Ridge. Uh, I've. You should put my glasses on.
No.
I've been a resident of Corcoran since two thousand and one when my wife and I moved with our four children into the house we had built on lot two of block one into Hunter's Place subdivision. Our lot shares a seven hundred and fifty foot border with the Lothar property, lot one, which is directly to the west of us and was part of our subdivision containing the original farmer's homestead. There are eight lots with homes in the subdivision which were divided up from the original farm property in the nineties to meet the Corcoran requirement of one house per ten acres. In fact, the covenant we received for the subdivision. One in ten requirement. We had no reason to believe the standards for this legacy development would be changed in the future until now. The proposed application for a change to the zoning associated with the Lothar property would greatly change the identity of our neighborhood. We would see around a threefold increase in the number of homes. This isn't like having a new densely populated development put in next to our neighborhood because a farmer was ready to cash out such as Bellwether to our east. No, this is within our local neighborhood. For us residents who have invested money and effort into our homes here in Hunter's Place, it would feel like a breach of contract by the city. To fit the number of homes required by this newly requested zoning assignment, a number of lots would have to be placed along my western border. You can see that on the map there. The last drawing I saw had six, which was this one, I guess, had six lots running along it. These homes would be backed up to my property overlooking my front yard, backyard, and house. The sense of privacy I've enjoyed these last twenty-four years would be lost. Can you imagine six homes backed up against your property with windows and decks overlooking everything you do? I've been told this could very well have an adverse effect on my property value. I know without a doubt we would not have bought this property if we would have had a clue that this could happen. Please take into consideration the input from us residents who live in this neighborhood and will be the most affected by the decisions you make today. And I request, if you haven't already, to please take a drive out to Hunter's Place to look around in order to better understand the impact this zoning change would have on our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the last comment card we received is from Ms. Kathleen Dickinson.
Good evening. I am Kathleen Dickinson, one nine seven two five Hunter's Ridge. I attended the planning committee meeting a few weeks ago and I had no intention of speaking. But as I sat there and watched our. I was distracted by the picture of the new Corcoran logo and I felt I needed to see something in the hope that the vision of Corcoran is not going to go away forever. It represents much of the landscape of Corcoran when we moved here and picked out our lot. The lot was on a plot of eighty acres for ten residents. We built our home, we raised three teenagers, we planted five hundred trees, and we've been happy to be a Corcoran resident for the past twenty-five plus years. Certainly, things have changed. Bellwether purchased the property adjacent to ours. They are planning to add seven new homes along our eastern border. Those houses will join the hundreds that are already there, but we have no voice in how that land is used. It's being developed exactly as was proposed and approved by the council. Our neighborhood has been a constant. Only one house has changed owners since our neighborhood was developed. We've been of like mind for many years. However, significant changes are being proposed for the Hunter Ridge neighborhood again. It will increase traffic noise and create a dramatic change in the rural countryside that we've come to love. As you know, some of our, as you may know, some of our neighbors have amounts of land similar to those being considered for development. So we have some questions. Is changing the land use guidance open for just anybody? Will my neighbors be able to get the same treatment if they ask to develop their acreage at a later date? Will we be able to match house for house from the homes across from us? We could make quite a bit of money on a land sale. Please be prudent when you're making this decision. All of Corcoran will be watching and all other landowners will and should expect some exceptions if there are exceptions granted tonight. We are a neighborhood of rule followers and we realize the guidelines are going to possibly change in two thousand and forty. Then maybe there'll be some changes, but for now, the regulations we used when we purchased our land are still in effect. And now I'm looking at the Corcoran logo and thinking the designer did a beautiful job. But there's a reason there's not twenty houses on twenty little lots on that logo. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
And is that it for the comments cards?
That's it for comments.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Hello? Any other residents that wanted to speak? Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I just want to answer a few of the questions that were posed by the residents. So, uh, there's a comment that we, that the subdivision should have happened at the time of a, or at the time of the water treatment facility. There was no application pending at that point in time for the Lothar property and so simply we wouldn't have had the ability to do so. And I think the other thing that would change here is that water and sewer are available to the property. There's a manhole that's located just to the east of the water treatment facility, just to the west of an adjacent wetland. So I'm confident that city staff can confirm that that is the case. There is also water right next to the property, if not stub two. There's a comment that Brian should sell his property and he could do so at any time, which is absolutely true. He could sell his property right now. But I guess I would ask the council, would the person that buy his property potentially also be seeking a subdivision? Would that person be looking at doing conservation residential or would they be looking to do maximizing the density to the extent possible? Uh, let's see.
Just real, just real quick, if I can jump into, back in the nineties when this was done, there was no Musa line in such case. So there's tremendous amount of things that have changed. I'll speak to myself. I lived on five acre parcels, twenty-four different people own five acre parcels in Maple Grove. And when the development came and the Musa line expanded, I think I've shared this with you, Jason. We said no twice. In the third offer, we couldn't say no anymore. It's just something that's not possible. The other thing that I've told people is if you don't want to develop, I don't know how much Brian's wanting to buy it for or sell it for and stuff, but if somebody wants to sell it for his current rate, current price, go ahead and buy it and leave it as court field and such. So it is, it is difficult to live back in nineteen ninety. I wish I still lived on my five acre parcel in Maple Grove. I still wish the whole neighborhood was there, but it changed and I'm five miles further west and I got a stinky dairy farm across the street that everybody complains about but me. I've got fields north and south of me, all of those things, but the difference is that Musa line and the directions from the Met Council. Met Council was originally set up to say, yes, you can grow. Yes, you can put this density in because we have septic, we have water, this is the plan, this is what's going on. Now the Met Council is putting in light rail and all these other things and that's not what Met Council was supposed to be. So a little bit of history from back in the late nineties from where I'm from. So it, it, it's that way. The direction that we, we said or the recommendations that we said or what we agreed to was the concept of doing this type of deal. We asked, might want to go for a little bit lower. The conservation residential was an option and it is something new. I don't think it was specifically for this.
No, definitely not.
It was to do something that would make it less tragic for some people. This, this has got my old neighborhood written all over it and it's, it's tough. And the way it was done over in Maple Grove is as things happened, everybody in the neighborhood had that right to sell their parcel, especially inside the Musa line. The densities and those kind of things would be the same thing. The thing that I, I never imagined, these are beautiful homes y'all live in and I can't imagine anybody tear it down unless you got twice what I got for my five acres. It's just, it's a huge deal, so. Just, I, I'm speaking from experience. It saddens me, it sickens me that, that things change and I wish they didn't, but boy, it's just snowballing out here, so thank you for letting me speak. Thanks.
I guess I'd stand for any questions to the council.
I have one question. Can you explain like the type of housing that's going to, that potentially could be placed in that location?
Yes, so, um, we, these lots, on average, they definitely, I think all of them exceed two tenths of an acre, most of them exceed two, a quarter of an acre minimum, which is a pretty large lot for new development at the moment, especially within a Musa. Um, these homes would range from what we've been told is anywhere between seven hundred and fifty on the low end, up to one point two million on the high end. So we're, I, I would just also, I can understand, by the way, the desire to screen to and from this development. What I can tell you, and I would hope that Natalie and Dwight could offer backup here, is with the buffer yard requirements that are in place in the city of Corcoran, it exceeds any standard that I've seen in the metro in terms of not only do you have to plant it, you have to record it as an easement or you're going to maintain it. So my point with that being, we're not able to, I'm certainly not, it's not in our interest to go and develop or do a preliminary plot that's speculative in nature before having this conversation tonight, but I would just say you have zoning ordinances in place that are intended to do exactly what, to prevent this kind of clear cutting of trees and lack of buffers and this like conflict between existing homes and proposed homes. The council, I think some of you were on it when that ordinance passed and that was, as I understand it and as it's been explained to me, was the exact point of those buffer yards was to be installed and provide that screen so that it minimizes the impact to the extent practicable. I'm not saying that somebody's not going to see a house. It's impossible. It's a field right now. There's going to be a house that's out of it, you know, should this proceed. What I would just say is like, I would much rather engage in a friendly dialogue in terms of how we can minimize the impact to the extent possible than a black or white, it's a farm field or, you know, or it's, you know, we're paving over the whole thing and it's, you know, some hellscape. That's not our intent. And so I would just say, you know, I might, everyone, if they don't have my email already, I'm happy to give it out. I got cards with me today. I'm happy to engage with any resident that wants to in terms of a solution to mitigate impacts. I can't respond to something I don't control, which is their views from their property. I can only, I can only do what's, you know, on our property and try to do the best we can in terms of mitigating those impacts. Thank you.
Thanks.
Could staff elaborate on the buffer class that would be required and what that could look like?
And to be clear, that's not necessarily part of, that isn't part of this.
It's not part of this conversation.
But to understand the decision.
Yeah, it would be a future decision regardless.
I can pull up right now.
Well, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe there's a buffer yard class B from the concept plan. Granted, the concept plan's not the final design, so that could change, but.
Yes, assuming it's an RSF three zoning district, we have found that most have to be RSF two, RSF three against urban reserve, so RSF three would be a B class, um, B buffer yard. RSF two would be an A buffer yard. I think it's going to have to be RSF three most likely. I think that's what we determined with the concept plan.
And what does that look like in terms of?
Sure, well, so it's either going to be a ten foot buffer yard with one over story, four under stories, six shrubs or tall native prairie plantings for the length of that boundary.
Every hundred feet?
Um, correct, every hundred feet. Or it'd be a twenty foot width and there's, that'd be, that's three over story plantings, six under story, nine shrubs or tall prairie plantings. Oh, I'm sorry, the ten foot would require a minimum four foot fence. Twenty foot without a fence is the three, six, nine. Twenty foot with a fence would be one over story planting, two under story, three shrubs and native plantings every hundred feet. Or it'd be a thirty foot buffer which with no fence or berm would be two, two over story, four under story, twelve shrubs. Or thirty foot with a four foot berm with one over story, two under story or four shrubs. So there's different options. So I would say at the very, that the smallest buffer, you would have relatively more plantings and you also have that four foot fence to provide a buffer.
Thank you. That's helpful to visualize.
And right now there's nothing on that eastern border, is there? Okay.
Yep, and again, that's something that would be.
That's down the road.
Yep, and a plat and development area of type phase of something. This is just strictly on the guiding.
If we're discussing, I too was there the night of the planning commission and such and I still am trying to put together the the conversation about the second motion and such. I didn't think it was an option to give another motion, but it was.
Okay, so thank you for bringing this up. It was a very, it was one of the harder debates that night. It was first of two, two votes.
It's been a long time since we had one like that.
So it was first of two, two votes, so two of our commissioners were in favor of the change, two of our commissioners were not. It was very late and I had never had that happen before. And what should have happened from there is that we should have forwarded no recommendation. On the fly, we just made a new recommendation, which is what is now forwarded to you, which is the three to one, where it's not doing the land use change and looking at a new land use category was what got moved.
Right.
So part of that was.
You remember better, you remember better than me because I, I had to turn around and try to sleep and then go to work next morning at four AM, but that's a whole other conversation. So I just, I, it was, it was a night of a lot of people talking and a lot of, a lot of information to digest and we're still chewing on it, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't think I have anything else.
Um, yeah, sure. I can comment. I actually did drive out there and took a look at the property and how it was situated. And I know that it's just a super hard thing for everybody in Corcoran right now. I live in an area that has exploded with houses and not just on one side, on both sides of me. I wish that I was rich enough to buy the property across from where I live so I wouldn't, I could see the sunset that night. I could see. So I'm, I'm telling myself now that I'm still going to see the sunset. It's just going to be a little bit higher. The sunset's going to, you know, the light. I feel that because we have an opportunity to take advantage of less density in this area, because I think it's just a matter of time before someone comes in and swoops up that land and not just that piece, but the houses that everybody lives in that neighborhood right now. I look at that and it's between two big developments. It's just a matter of time before someone comes in and starts offering you. I'm already getting offers where I live and I live on a very small parcel. I live under four acres. Um, so it tells me that there's developers and people out there looking and not just developers. Like I'm getting phone calls from families saying, my family is looking for a house and we love your property. Would you be interested in even talking to us? So I don't know, I don't think that, that it will drive your property value down. I think it's going to do the opposite, especially if it's houses that are between seven hundred and fifty thousand up to a million dollars. And so I look at it and I say, this is a best case scenario for us to utilize our, our new zoning for conservation residential and, and make the best use that we can of this area. And I do, I like the way that the road is now situated. It's not a U shaped. So I think that will distract people from coming in and going out, which I think will help with traffic a little bit. But that's where I stand with this. I feel like it's, it's going to be a situation where if you wait and you continue any longer, it's going to be a higher density, especially what's being presented at the Met Council right now with higher densities.
I struggle with this one a lot and to me, this decision comes down to, I don't like violating the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan says that this is a existing residential parcel. It's not intended to be redeveloped. So the question was asked, does he have the right or does he not have the right? He does not have the right. It's up to the council to make a policy decision. We want to re-guide that part of the comp plan. And so for me, the decision is, what is better for the city long term? To have this developed this way or develop the way that a council in two thousand and thirty, when the comp plan is revised and this is guided something else, would make it. And it could be guided to a higher density residential. It could be guided commercial in light of what's going on on the west.
The same guiding would be higher at that point, too.
Right. So I wrestle with this with Jay for like a half hour yesterday.
He didn't help, did he?
No, he definitely made his position clear.
Never helps me.
He laid out the facts, I think. It was right, it was a useful conversation. So I don't like it. I don't like that we have to make decisions like this where we're weighing an uncertain future against a certain present when the certain present has a negative impact on people of our city. But part of what we're called on to do is make those harder decisions and think about what is the long-term repercussion of a no versus repercussion of a yes. And I did wrestle with this quite a bit. Knowing the nature of the houses that are going in, I feel like this is probably better than the future unknown. I also feel like it would be nice if, when we make this kind of a call, if we're going to re-guide, are we just being asked, will we re-guide the Lothar parcel? Or is it the existing residential area in general in this part of town?
The application is strictly for the Lothar parcel.
So.
They're the applicant.
Yeah, I understand. What would it look like to expand that? So that if other people wanted in this immediate area where they're going to be impacted by this change, to give them the same kind of opportunity?
I'd say you look at the phasing map and when you're in the phase that allows you to develop.
Which these folks are all in. They're phase one, right?
No, they are not. This is the only parcel that's existing.
It's a little piece of land.
Only parcel in the entire city that's existing residential that's in.
Anybody want to sit up here?
I will say, to your question, we are right on the cusp of a two thousand and fifty update. So if it was important to include this neighborhood in what would become phase one and to re-guide a conservation residential, this could be a strategic area that we decide to do that as a city. We could make that call. What also could happen is we could leave it as is and if someone were to eventually come in and ask for that, we could also have that discussion at that time, too. Right now it's phase four, so no matter what, at this point, their current comp plan would be actually two different comp plan amendments. It'd be a comp plan amendment to the phasing plan, which does require some considerations to capacity. This is our northeast district, so it's probably fine. Southeast district, that's going to be a lot harder of a discussion. Um, and then it would also be the comp plan amendment to re-guide the land use, but we could do that as part of the two thousand and fifty update as a city as well.
Which we will begin in two thousand and twenty-six. Yeah, and that would be the time.
But if we're making an amendment, could that be part of the amendment?
So the amendment right now does not touch the phasing plan. The amendment in front of you is specific to this property.
Yeah.
So I would, if we want to do it, it'd be a city-driven amendment, which we could also do outside of the comp plan. I just think it would make more sense to do it strategically as part of the comp plan update since we're probably going to be having those discussions next year.
That would be a bigger whole process and other types of review through the Met Council and everything.
Thank you.
But I do think the two thousand and fifty plan is the place, that is the place to go, I think. Anything else?
I should point out a couple of folks who made comments and thank you everybody for speaking. The date on the comp plan is the end of the comp plan, period, rather than the beginning. So Natalie mentioned in two years, we're going to be starting the two thousand and fifty plan, which will actually go into effect in two thousand and thirty and cover that twenty-year period. So it's kind of, it's a source of misunderstanding regularly that people think this is not going to happen until thirty years from now. Well, no, that's just the way they number them, to the end instead of the beginning.
And as your city changes too, your comp plan sometimes does change. It just invariably happens because your city, our city especially, has changed so much since I moved here twenty-five years ago.
And then just recently. Sure, I could finish the comment on that one. So, so with the two thousand and forty comp plan, as it finishes it up, Met Council just recently voted for your awareness that our density will be going up to three point five for certain. So higher density is going to be required with the two thousand and fifty comp plan and, and they aren't all the way done with it. So it was hard discussions at four and our advocate, Ms. Judy Johnson, who advocated for our city during the comp plan discussions, she managed to secure three point five.
Do you have resolution yet as to whether that three point five is going to be applied in aggregate as an average versus every individual?
Okay, we don't yet. And, and legislation is going to also, right now with what's bouncing around, the comp plan might just be thrown out the window.
In the, one of the talks I was on, my understanding is that's the aggregate, so we could still have areas that are at two to three. We could still have a conservation. It's just going to be harder to hit that three point five average. So we're probably going to have to look at some kind of a low, medium category because most of our land that's developable is the three to five. And they look at that low end because they want to make sure even if we come in at the lowest densities for those land use categories, we're still going to hit three point five units an acre. So we're probably most likely going to have to look at some of that land that's currently three to five, now becoming four to six or something like that to be able to get to that three point five average.
And some of our neighbors to the east went up to seven.
I'll, I'll let you come up. I'll twist some, I'll twist some hairs for you, Dan.
We just got to make sure that we.
You still don't have your voice?
No. Diane Patterson, one nine seven nine five Hunter's Ridge. The applicant, it seems like it's being, sorry, plowed through. I appreciate Jeremy, how you're taking in consideration the existing code and that it shouldn't just be pushed through. But if it's going to go through for him, then we have no intention of selling our houses but to say, okay, he can do it, but you guys wait for two years. That's wrong. We don't want to, we are a group. We care about each other. We have no intention of selling, but we don't want to hear that he can sell, but you guys can't. You wait two years and we'll see if you like it. We'll see if we let you do it. That is wrong. We have a very good guess what you guys are going to do tonight. But it's not just good for him. If you're going to do it for him, we expect the whole thing.
That's, that's what we're asking, Diane. That's, that's what we're asking. Well, that's what we're asking. That's what we're asking.
There's a big.
That process would be big for us in the next year.
Before even a conversation stay out, I recommend passing it when there's been no conversation. That's a problem. You can understand my frustration of how this is coming out. We appreciate you, Jeremy, and how you put some thought into this. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I, she says it very well. Why can't we do something with this area?
We can do it with this application. It would be a city-driven project at this point.
Understood.
How big of a project is that? How big of a project is that?
I mean, it's staff time, but, and we'd have to do a public hearing, so it's, I'd have to look at how much it costs to go, this application to this point. It's close to that amount of staff time. And then it's also a question of what's different with this one again is that phasing plan. And so we have to, the problem with that is we have to also look at our growth management plan. So there's bigger Met Council input. That's why I think it'd be easier to do with our comp plan updates. We're looking at that collectively. But not to say it can't be done. It'd be a city-driven project and if council wants to direct staff to do that. And if council wants to direct staff to do that, then we could come back with a scope proposal of what we think would be the cost amount in terms of staff time. But it would be not something that's escrow funded. So it's something that me and Dwight are doing on top of our other strategic priorities as well.
But if somebody were to come, one of these property owners were to come and say? I wanna consider this, they pay the application fee, do the same processes what the Loathers do, so that's.
It'd be available to them, absolutely.
That's still, it's not, we aren't doing it for one and not the other. We would do the same process.
Tonight and it's a process for anyone in the city to have this discussion as well.
Actually, it might open the door if someone wanted to do that and make it.
I don't think they want the door open, Michelle. I think they wanna whole different things, so.
The only difficulty to keep in mind with the changing phasing is that a lot of things you have to then offset that somewhere else you have to find. That's a conversation we had with the industrial site that fell apart when it was asked if we could change that to a, to a different land use category? And having to offset all of that. So that's something to keep in mind in a future discussion. But the small scale of it makes it maybe.
I could ask one thing, Natalie. Why is? I'm sorry, it's been a long day. This property being different than those properties, what am I looking for? Do you have the phasing plan and why is this in one and the rest or Dwight's digging?
I think it has everything to do with the water treatment plant going on on that site. And it needed to be phased one in order for us to put that water treatment plant there.
But has it always been that way or was it changed?
I, it's been that way for sure since the 2040 comp plan. I don't have the 2030 comp plan available to be able to tell you if it's in there. But I know that that was known when we did the 2040 comp plan in 2017 that it needed to be in phase one.
And all of the fuchsia is phase one?
Correct.
Can you just? Make it smaller? I'm sorry, guys. Zoom out, yeah, sure. Make me smarter and I look. Okay. Wow. Thanks very much. No, it's still not helping me, but that's a whole other problem. It's personal now, it's just a personal issue that I have, so appreciate you.
Of course.
What are you drinking, by the way? You actually talked a lot of good things.
Just water.
Just checking.
From the new water tower.
I think it's from Italy.
And for all of the neighbors?
It's definitely from Costco.
I did spend a lot more time in your neighborhood than these guys, just ask Jason, so. Many times over the years, so.
I will say too, you don't necessarily always know what's gonna end up next to you. I was very fortunate, I had, I live in an area where there was a substation that was gonna be put right behind my garage. And I did the same things that you guys are doing. I came and spoke at public meetings and tried to make council understand why this was a bad idea to put this right here. And I would be so thankful if there were houses there now, knowing what could have been placed there. And not to say that that helps ease that feeling at all, because I completely understand. I just think that there could be something potentially much worse that could end up going there. And not in, not in the long term either. I think it's gonna happen fast with all the developments happening.
And the other thing I would highlight is that, again, this is just the comp plan portion of the discussion. Whichever way it proceeds, the site plan, whether it's a, the site plan rezoning, whether it's PUD, all of that would be figured out. Regardless of this decision, or based on this decision, but still as a future process, application? And public hearings and all of that to go into actually design a development before it is approved.
Would this have to be a PUD or would it work as a straight zone?
I think they were pretty close to me having to have some application under our SF3. I think there was a little bit of work that needed to be done, but that was the intent.
And again, that's what gets figured out after.
It's down the road.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I don't want to.
Was anyone willing to make a motion?
She started.
I did start one. I'll make the motion again.
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Actually, did you wanna state the motion? Did you get the motion from earlier?
Motion to approve resolution 202531 approving the comp plan amendment.
Yep, wanna make sure we have the right number. Yep, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed?
I haven't voted yet. Yeah, aye, aye, we, yes, I don't wanna see something worse going. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you all. Do you want a minute? We will move on to item eight, which is unfinished business. We have one item, which is the 2025 core strategies, objectives, goals, and measurables.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so as you recall, we first met in January. We did some SWOT analysis, looking at our core strategies in order to look at 2025 strategic objectives. We met then on March 3rd for a working session with department heads. And we were able to flush out some, some key strategic objectives for each core strategy. And then the department heads met for a strategic planning session and following that on March 14th. And we did an offsite in order to flush out some goals that align with those 2025 strategic objectives to support those core strategies. So you have that information in front of you. It's important that, I want to acknowledge that this looks different than what our previous goals looked like. And in one way, it might feel like these are pretty high level.
Previous meaning previous years?
Previous years. So for example, last year's, we had some very clear goals with some clearly articulated measurables. And we successfully achieved them before the close of the second quarter. And so as we talked about during our strategic planning sessions? We wanted to have some higher level goals in order to make sure that we are staying at the strategic level, not slipping down into the operational level. And so with that framework, we have some, some clear goals. I'll, just for the benefit of the, those who are watching at home? Council member, former council member Bottom is watching. I think this is the first time he's ever attended.
It is, I got a message from him. I'm sorry I recognized him, but that's a whole other thing.
Yeah. So with our core strategy of enhancing Corcoran sense of place and identity? We recognized celebrating the sense of place is the strategic objective for 2025. And we identified two key goals with that. One, which had come up earlier in discussions, is the importance of gateway signage as people enter the community, understanding what Corcoran is, what Corcoran values? And the fact that they are in Corcoran, they're crossing into Corcoran. And so celebrating a sense of place, creating that gateway experience is a goal. It's important to note that already we have some through one of our development agreements, some that is in process? That will be in place by the developer. And so I love that we added a discussion with another developer, potentially doing that, rather than having to leverage other financing? Using these opportunities in order to enhance our sense of place without having to pay it. You've heard me say this before, my favorite kind of money is OMB, other people's money. So if we can.
Like having a friend with a boat, it's better than having a boat.
Exactly. So if we, if we can find partners that are willing to help us do that, and we heard one tonight, but that was one. The other one is, is our city park is in the process of moving forward with its first phase. You know, so more of that will be coming forward here soon. The importance of renaming it to identify a specific sense of place, rather than just city park? And to use this as an opportunity in order to distinguish it as distinctly Corcoran. So next core strategy would be diverse community amenities and recreational opportunities. When we had talked before, we had talked about a master park plan. I wanted to point out that the reason we use the word strategic park plan as the strategic objective? Is because a master park plan is usually the byproduct of a comprehensive plan. So you have a parks and recreation portion of the comprehensive plan. There's a chapter in there. And you, and then you follow up as part of the comprehensive plan, you'll do a master park plan. That's not where we're at. The master park plan is very, very expensive. I did a master park plan in Shakopee. That's not what we're proposing. And it's looking at the scope of all potential future needs and stuff like that. Ours is much more strategic, recognizing that we've identified projects? And we wanna make sure that we're developing plans so that we can achieve objectives of accomplishing those projects. So it's within the scope, it's very strategic of making sure, here's the stuff we've identified. We have Tavera, we have Bellwether, we have some open space parks, we have linear parks. How are we going to get those objectives that we've already committed to accomplished within a reasonable timeframe? That's the strategic park plan. And so our goals for that are a clear vision for it, an action plan for it, and then implementing that action plan. And you might say those feel really generic. But working together with the Parks and Trails Commission in order to make sure we have a clear vision? Because different people have different ideas of what should happen in those spaces. We need to do community engagement. That becomes part of solidifying and clarifying that vision. And then the action plan is based upon both available resources, but also capturing potential opportunities. Like we just talked about a developer that we might be able to help them make a gateway. There's opportunities there, too, as we have developments come in. Maybe there's ways that we can get them to partner in different ways so that we don't have to do these park plans. We let them deliver the parks. So that would be a policy change. But we have to understand, is that a vision that we wanna pursue? So that we can focus on the commitments that we already have that we haven't been able to fulfill? And then implementing that. Next on the agenda would be excellence in safety and security for our community. Two strategic objectives there, one is the fire service plan. And then the other one is diversifying sustainable revenue streams. That is just, how are we finding other ways to pay for some of the things that we want to do? Like we just talked about parks. You know, so if we can find other ways, we're pursuing lots of grants, we've talked about that. If we can find ways to achieve some of these objectives, so that it removes some of the pressure on the levy? We get better services, we get better opportunities, without it having to negatively impact residents. So the more that we can diversify our strategic strategy for sustainable revenue streams, the better that is. And then those goals, as it breaks down, are gaining an understanding of the plan that was developed in 2018. So we have a really good playbook for our fire services. We have not been following that playbook. And so we have to look at it, make sure we understand it. Is that in fact the playbook that we want to follow? Or do we want to update it? Do we want to deviate from it? Yes.
Do you think we could get a copy of that?
The fire services plan? Absolutely. So it's, if you remember, May 8th is when it's on our, we're having a work session to unpack that. And so, yeah, we will get that to you.
I thought it was on the website.
Yeah, we'll make sure that you have access to it. And then affirming or adjusting that plan? And then whatever we clarify we wanna do, refining that and then implementing it. And then to diversify sustainable revenue streams? We need to make sure that we've done an inventory and an assessment of what we have? So that we can figure out where our gaps analysis is, what do we need, what do we need to do? So that's that, that's those goals. Next is ensure high-quality market-driven growth. Clear city vision for intentional growth is the strategic objective. And then the goals are to identify and adopt strategies to protect natural resources by ordinance. That continues to be a priority within the community, we hear it from residents. And it's part of the vision if you look at our vision statement as a city. Ensuring policies and procedures align with that vision for intentional growth. So do we have potential policy gaps in which we can protect the resources because the policy doesn't give us enough teeth? Or enough clarity in order to ensure that we're accomplishing that objective? And then lastly, a feasibility study of County Corridor 30, County 30 corridor. It's came up in discussions tonight with 610 dumping all of that vehicle traffic into our community. We need to make sure we understand what the requirements are? So that as we're trying to chase dollars or as we're trying to chase legislators in order to become advocates for us to accomplish some of the changes we need? We need to make sure we've identified what we need. And right now, we don't have a clear enough understanding in order to try and get those advocates to fight for us for the things that we need. And then the last is a municipal facilities and land blueprint. We are busting at the seams of this facility. It is not at the end of its life cycle, but it's, it's at the end of its good use for us. So it might have other purposes for ways that we can repurpose it. But we need to look at potential opportunities for us to continue to provide quality services. And so that would be, that would start with a space needs assessment. With what we currently have and then what we look at with what we're gonna need to provide the services for the communities, we keep going? What do we need for spaces? Because this current space isn't sufficient to do it. And then we do an asset inventory and evaluation of what we've got? And so we can identify what do we need? So it may be that we've got what we need, we just need to use it better? We need to refine it, re-update it? Then get that clear vision for a civic campus wherever that is and then develop the plan. So those are the goals. And my proposal that deviates from previous plans? Is that staff will bring you the measurables as we're trying to take the steps to achieving those goals. Because when we get into here and we decide tactically what those goals might be, what those measurables might be? As we experienced last year, we're checking them off pretty quickly. Instead, what we might discover is that what we thought was the measurable to achieve that goal, it's actually over here. We need to do this. So it gives staff flexibility in order to make sure that we're using all the best opportunities to achieve the goals that we have. I said a whole lot of words, what are your questions?
I think this is great. I think this is kind of the way it was two years ago when we had that long list. And then when you came on, Jay, I think we said, I think the list was long enough, let's just continue on to 2024. This is.
That was part of it, yeah.
I mean, I think that's a reason and I think it was kinda like, yay, I think staff said, hey, we got a whole bunch we can check off real quick? And then we'll look really good for 2024, which we did. This is huge and all of these subjects are something that aren't gonna get checked off the list very fast. But it's stuff we've gotta be doing. So that's, that's my thoughts, it's agreed. I would have never been able to put our thoughts together to make it look like this, so good job.
That's why he makes more money than you do.
I don't know that that is true.
Makes more money than all of us do together at council.
Multiplied by a bunch.
Yeah, he's done good.
I would, I like the idea of not trying to define the entire year worth of measurables? Because I agree, there's gonna be moving targets, it'll shift. But I do think it's reasonable, maybe on a quarterly basis, using the updates to the measurables? That you let us know what you're planning for the next quarter? And we can keep that as a rolling update as we go, if that's okay with staff.
That's a reasonable ask. Because then also, as we're chasing things, you might go, whoa, or you might go, 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 go. That gives us some feedback to ensure that we're chasing and pursuing the things to achieve the goals that align with the council's priorities.
And it's not, whoa, and then go, 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 it's whoa, or, or, yee-haw, let's go.
I think it's a great.
Corcoran talk.
I think it's a great start and it's a living document, there'll be changes to it.
Yes, it's great.
As opportunities come up and.
I like that quarterly update.
But yeah, I like that as well. But I think it's. But yeah, I, I like that as well, but I think it's a good place to start.
Again, what are you drinking?
Jeremy's on, Jeremy's good today.
Bloody Mary.
Drink some for the class next time.
Liquid courage.
Blood, orange and black raspberry. Alright, I messed up, I wrote that wrong.
Oranges.
Alrighty, and with that, so, Jay, you got everything you need?
Yep, I got enough feedback, thank you.
We have no new business?
Can I ask a question real quick?
No, yes.
Planning commission, do we, we have it open, have we got applicants and such?
We have four.
And who's our group doing that?
Me and Mark Langley.
You and Mark did that. I'm-
We're going to.
For some reason, I thought I was doing it, so, thanks.
No, I think it's-
Yep, nope, I think, I think you're right. It was you and Mark gonna do it, since Mark was the last one there, so.
Well, so, Michelle and I did that, so then it goes this way, Jeremy.
Yep, nope.
You're actually the last person that will have it.
I know. Still looking for somebody to be that planning liaison, but nobody's jumping on that either, so.
Let's see what we can do.
I just gave you a-
But yeah, but I think we have four applicants for-
Correct.
Wow.
So, when Mark gets back in town, we're gonna schedule some calls.
Okay.
And from what I can tell, smart, we have some good options, so, should be good.
I know a couple of them. Cool.
Alrighty, and with that, anything important on staff reports, Jay?
Uh, nothing for staff reports, but I just wanted to talk about the schedule real quick, if I could. So, pretty exciting, April 10th, we're gonna recognize with the longevity award, Pat Meister for 35 years with the city. That's pretty remarkable.
Wow.
So, looking forward to recognize him. Three Rivers Park District will be here. Our representative, Mark Beard, will be talking about our investment strategy. And then Elm Creek Watershed will also be. So, what's a little bit different about that one is we'll have four front-loaded presentations. We haven't had that many yet. So, that wasn't the plan, but they just kept coming up, but, so, so that will be a little bit-
Is John still on?
Is John coming?
He is not.
Oh, gotta say, John, John wouldn't like the four-
No.
Presentations.
He'd just wanna get a copy ahead of time.
He just wanna copy ahead of time, don't surprise us.
Well, I was, I was thinking about the watershed commissioner, you know, since he was on, we could have just appointed him, say that this was his first meeting.
There you go.
I can make that motion if you want me to.
I would be in so much trouble.
We do need someone, if anyone is interested, though, we are still seriously trying to fill that.
And, and then, at the, I just wanna remind again, at the end of April, our firearms safety field day, that's, that's a big deal for those who aren't aware. We have ongoing training every week right now on Sundays, with some great partners in the community. They're doing classes over at Hope, but, you know, you, you've got five dozen young people that are learning how to be safe and all the principles of hunting. And before I got here, I didn't know that, but it is the premier program, and so-
Yes, I was there the first night, and I think I counted five folks from our police, our staff, and then some of the volunteers that have been doing it-
Yeah.
-as long as it's existed, so I thank them for me and all y'all if you didn't want me to thank you.
It's been going for a long time.
Yep.
And then as, it used to be a thing that a lot of communities did, they've all dropped off. And then even those existing programs that have stayed on, they do it primarily online.
Yep.
Where our program requires these young people to come in person, which is, which is really great, so the quality, the education. But this field day is unique. No one else does this. So, they come on here to the site, they have to practice all of the principles and demonstrate competency. And so, the people who are graduating from this program are, are really set up for success for a lifetime of safe, safety and recreational hunting, so.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Take a lot of pride in it.
What's that?
Both my kids did it.
Nice.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it this year, but it's worth checking out if you haven't before.
What day is it again?
April 26th.
And it'll rain that day, just telling you.
Consistently.
That's Saturday, it will rain.
And it will be cold.
I will be in the Caribbean, so I ignore the cold.
Maybe it'll rain where you are, too.
Possible. It's my anniversary, so hopefully.
Hopefully not.
Okay. And with that, do we have anything else we needed to highlight on the, on the schedule?
No, sir.
I thought I saw an invite to-
Oh, yes, cleanup day. Citywide cleanup day, May 3rd. Thank you.
It is a blast.
I might be able to make it this year. Normally, I can't make that one.
Saturday, May 3rd, citywide cleanup.
Wear your rain gear, it will rain.
I hear a theme from you.
Anything we do, it seems to rain on us, but free pizza afterwards, cookies, all kinds of good stuff. It's fun to go.
Did you mention the, didn't we add a work session on April 10th?
Oh, thank you, yeah, that's not, I, my failure. I, I sent that email out to you all for the work session on April 10th, for our decision-making process, balanced decision-making process. Mr. Jim Prosser, who's a legend in the city management world, he worked for Ellers for about a decade. I met with him last week, and it aligns with things that we talked about with strategic planning to ensure that we're efficiently and effectively bringing the right information to the right level at the right time.
Thanks for putting that together.
Yeah, that'll be great.
I, I will get that added. I apologize that that got skipped. Thank you.
And then we have the other work sessions on this calendar here, the May 8th, and one more coming up, isn't there?
I think those are the only two currently on the long-range calendar.
Sounds good.
Unless council would like us to add any specific topics.
I think we're good for now, but never say never. And with that-
Can't wait to see the water treatment.
Yeah, that'll be cool. That'll be very cool. With that, we are done, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'll move there, Cam.
Second, Friedrich.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.